Go on this.
Good to go, Alan.
I'm gonna call this evening's meeting and plan a commission to order. Um, and the first order of businesses, pledge of allegiance, everyone stand. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. Into the great public which stands on a nation, under God, indivisible, with the very interests of all. Well, sorry, you know, they're there. Commissioner Hinni? Commissioner Davis, Mr. Songstad, Commissioner Lynn Scott. Commissioner Taylor, okay, we have a quorum. So, uh, the announcements.
Uh, so Commissioner Frank, if I could get ahold of us, then he wasn't gonna be here in South Town, so this is huge for the evening. What's that?
He's not gonna be here.
You are. I didn't hear from Mr. Eleven. Okay, there you go. So, uh, there's a couple of action items, um, and we'll get back to this near the end of our meeting when we discuss, uh, agenda items for next meeting. Um, so the board did a couple of actions this morning for those that weren't, um, watching the morning meeting. So I presented a moratorium on a couple of land division application types, so minor land divisions and family exemptions. Um, that gives the county a hundred and eighty-two days to craft an ordinance. So this isn't a final decision, it's essentially a stay on those types of land divisions. So that was approved by the board this morning, um, during their business meeting. So we have till September twenty-fourth, um, to come up with some kind of draft and make it through the hearing process, including the board's hearings. So like I said, I think we should add this as an agenda item for workshop and start discussing that next meeting, which I think is next Tuesday, if I remember right. Is it the first? Yeah. Cause why not just do this every week, right? It's great. And then the other item that was presented by, uh, one of the commissioners, uh, this was specific to direct staff to process a change to the commercial use table and remove RV parts as a commercial use. Um, in two different zones, a rural residential and the at-force zoning districts. So I guess you could say four different zones of districts, but encompassing those two. So that is not giving a specific request to the planning commission to review this change. What it does is says the county commissioners are the applicants on this. Um, so that will be processed by staff. I'll bring it forward as like a workshop item next week, just to talk about that. Um, just know, like, that's the specific requirement, um, of staff, uh, with the applicants being the, the, the board accounting commissioner, so. They have a handful of different options, that's the one they decided to exercise in this case, so. We'll be crafting that application and then, um, presenting that in a, in a hearing sometime over the next, once, once we can get through our application, we're, we'll review sites in a month, month and a half.
Hearing before the.
A hearing with you guys first, make a recommendation to the board. Other than that, I don't have.
Rural Service Center also.
Oh, correct, yes, Rural Service Center was included, thank you, it's true. So those are the two major changes or major, uh, things added to my plate this morning, and then some things added to your guys' plate for review, so. Uh, family exemption and my island divisions were the two, um, they had some discussion regarding the waiver of land division. So that moratorium and kind of your task given to you now, um, when crafting these changes, um, is not limited to just those two items, you can look at some other changes. Um, I wouldn't say let's do a full-on re-review, re-review or review of the chapter six, cause I think that could take months and months. If we can refine specific to those administrative land division application types, that way we don't get too off track. Um, if we wanna review the remainder of chapter, I think that's, that's fine and appropriate. Um, but just those two application types, um, with some, maybe some provisions and short plats and so others. And so, I'll prepare like a red line version, present to you guys next week in a workshop for that, if that's really what I have to add on the agenda, but that's what I would suggest.
Is that necessarily, well, is it likely to, uh, to involve short plats?
Likely, yeah, so it, it can, I mean, that's an administrative review process, right now, the, the moratorium made some minor, minor change, the definition of a short plat to call it any divisional land that's ten lots or fewer, that way, somebody that comes in for a four lot subdivision or four lot short plat, we, we don't, I mean, the definition wouldn't cover anything less than five, so with the current, with the current draft, so. More or less, anybody between now and September still has the option of dividing their land into, you know, ten or fewer pieces. While we work through the change that needed in the family exemption. I don't wanna get into like full-on specifics, cause we don't have that agenda, and I just wanted to give it as an announcement. Um, that that's something that we should have next week to start the discussion on, it's out of feeling, it might take a little bit, probably at least two weeks, right? Maybe. Okay. Um, Mike's here, we have some announcements specific, or we have some discussion, you know, specific to the land use component and the data found in the land use analysis tool, so, um, when we get to that, that next agenda item, I'll hand Mike over to Mike. And, uh, have him kinda give you some rundown, and I'm still working on updating the tables and kinda get to reasons why then, that's all I have.
Well, we've, you know, we have public comments, and then we have the, responding to the request for a consultant, well, Mike, listen through all that.
If we can, if we can jump the gun a little bit, I think give them some time to give some explanation, and, uh, then we can get to the other agenda, I think would be appropriate. Or, okay, well, why don't we do that now? Yeah, sounds good. So, when reviewing the data, um, it, some things just weren't jiving in the, in the, when we, when we had the twenty twenty-four data, and we looked at vacant land, we tried to, to figure it out, um, Mike started with reviewing the, um, the Alpine District, just to kinda silo some information and try to validate what was going on with the data, and we found out there was a bigger problem, so what kind of, I think it's in there. Cause Mike did all the work on this, I just found a problem, and then the problem dumped it on me as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm laughing, Ross.
Given potential path forward, and that's kinda where we ended up.
Yeah, so the, the issue res- resolves around the, the export tables that we get out of the assessing database, and, um, so when a, when a land division happens in Bonner County, it doesn't get on the assessment rolls and follow following year. And so for, if a land division happens in March, uh, we do the, the work in GIS right away, we create the parcel, um, number for that parcel that was created, but we don't get the associated assessment information until the following year, and so we have these land division parcels that don't have any information coming out of our assessing database. And so when I ran this data through our model, I was looking for the information that is tied to the parcel that comes out of the assessing database, and it didn't exist, and so the model that I had set up, error on my part on how I had it set up, but it was looking at, at the property class description that comes out of the assessor's database to try to find vacant lands. Um, I think there's like ten or so codes that, um, relate to vacant lands as the assessor codes them out. So all those parcels that were not having information come through with them got put on as not being vacant. Uh, but.
That's not being vacant.
Not being vacant, or no, as being vacant, sorry, as being big. No, not being vacant, sorry.
So, he, he used a handful of assessor categorizations to figure out what was vacant land.
Yeah.
But if that land changed hands, that categorization went to a, a field of null. So it got excluded from that, that, the total number, only if it was sold within that given year.
Yeah, so, so there was, but yeah, there's a bunch of properties that I had listed as vacant that potentially aren't vacant.
Aren't?
Aren't, so, um, what I did is I went, I, uh, every year we get building foot from twenty twenty-one to, to now, I get building footprint data every year from our aerial flyover. And so I utilize that building footprint data to have these parcels that came through with a null value, and then look at, do they have a building on them, yes or no? And then, if they do have a building on them, then they're not vacant, no building, then they're vacant, that's kind of the, the logic I had going through that. Uh, the problem we have is we don't have building footprint data prior to twenty twenty-one. So, uh, for the twenty nineteen, uh, twenty twenty, um, data, I utilized the twenty twenty-one building footprints to first look at all those that did have a building on them, according to our building footprints, and then I had to manually look at every single one of those and see if in our twenty eighteen imagery, if the building was on that. To, to categorize those in the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty data.
So what, what's the result?
The, the result is the updated numbers that I gave Jake, so, so I reran that, and so that land use tool now has those part, those parcels that have the null value in the property class description, those now should be fairly accurate in regards to if they had a building on them or not for that year.
So how, like a percentage basis, how, how much of the differences are made?
If they, so I, he, he completed his stuff on this like three hours ago, two, two and a half hours ago, so earlier today, and I have, I'm still updating the tables to see what the, there's so much of all of this, right? And how does this make the change? So we have the tables from the previous data, um, um, now we have the new updated information, I'll just have to pull it in and put it in tables and craps, so. I haven't done that yet.
We haven't done an analysis yet.
It, I don't think it's gonna do, it's just, I don't think it's gonna be such a substantial change, you might see a decrease in the number of vacant lands. If, if you remember, right, some of these, it seemed like the vacant lands kinda upped and down on the total quantity, um, depending on the different zone. So I think this new data is kinda, kinda show more of a declining trend, cause I, I, it's gonna capture that data in a more accurate fashion. Is it all so technical, we need to look at the numbers together, maybe?
Yeah, we'll get the numbers together.
Yes, so, I'll, I'll work on, I'll keep working on, but you're not, probably not way at it, but.
Yeah, cause, and you know, I'm thinking that one clause someplace in the land use component here, where we say there's enough, uh, we will grow five acre tracts for at least ten years. Well, not presidential. That may or may not be the case.
Yeah, there, there might be a couple of those, um, conclusions we came to that we might have to potentially amend, but again, I, I don't know, right, I'll put a lot of those maybe, possibly, you know, revision in a second. Uh, we need to, we need to look at it, and I, we saw, we figured out there was this issue last week, little last Tuesday or Wednesday, when I was trying to update and finalize this, went to Mike with it. This is government moving lightning fast. In a week, we had a solution, and we had updated numbers and, and data and tables, so. I didn't think Mike would get it done by now, but, um, I can say that we can update all of our tables, so that the components up to date. Um, by the end of the week for certain, I mean, I can probably get it done tonight or tomorrow. Um, but as far as that, how does that result in different conclusions out of this, I'm not sure. I'm sorry. Bad news, but good news, right? We had a, we had a problem, we found a solution, but we don't know what the end result is.
Well, it's bad news in that I'm not sure that we can, we can basically set this for here.
Right.
Um, that, because I mean, that was a cool conclusion to reach in the, in the component, so.
Well, depending on how long I'll public comment, I might be able to finish updating yours' table, we can look at it together, so.
Okay, yeah, um. All right. Anything else?
Well, that's all I have, yeah.
Okay.
And I apologize, I understand.
It was a, it's a, it's a great tool, it's a lot of information, so.
So, good idea, that's a great question then. Your GIS is part of the assessor's office now, is that correct? So the assessor's office is using aerial.
I mean, the assessor's office hasn't been using aerial for ever since GIS was a thing here.
Okay.
Yeah.
When does it take a year for the assessor to suck in the house or the property change?
It's not, it's not effective in their world. They're, they're always looking at, you know, what was there in the prior year, so, so they're, they're, they're not taxing for that new split, right, until the following year. So, and then, are you talking like technically, like why aren't we getting that export from like from assessors?
Yes.
Prior, is historically is it a limitation to the, due to the system they're using, the S four hundred system they're using?
Any other questions for Mike? If not, thank you.
I mean, the, the, the assessor wouldn't be looking at any of that stuff and applying, you know, does it have a building on it, what's the value of that, all that stuff until the year that they're reviewing it, so it, it wouldn't, even if we got an export from them, it would all be blank anyway. Right.
Okay, thank you. You think that's it? Jake, for announcements? Jake, yeah. All right, move to the consent agenda, I, I have not seen minutes of March eighteenth, so. Is anybody seen?
I reviewed them.
I am.
Um.
We, how do we get her?
There in the drives, and I, um, I have the.
Chairman, I, 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 like you said, I reviewed them, and after reviewing them, there's, there's not much there. I think the concern that was brought up last week is that we seem to have trouble remembering what we talked about and decided in previous meetings. Partially because maybe the minutes are not capturing everything. And this was a good example where we need to maybe figure out how to improve our process, because there was really nothing in the min- minutes except two people making statements, and then, and I think that was about it off the top of my head.
Uh, do you have a copy of the minutes?
I can print on print.
You should do it on the drive. Way back there. And then. This might be a far-fetched suggestion, but on our minutes, where we type those up, I don't know if we can put a link to that YouTube. So if someone's looking through those minutes and they actually wanna watch that, I don't know.
So, the idea is after the minutes are approved, um, on the link on the calendar, we, we drop in the approved minutes, and then they have a pay, copy paste of the YouTube link to that meeting.
Okay.
That's the end result, um. I need to give, I need to insert my admin, kinda follow that process, and after each meeting, those, those, um, the meeting, under the meeting archives, I can show you where the stat, that those links get added, and so, um, someone pointed out that it's been some time, or, you know, a month or so since we've added the YouTube links on it, so I just gotta make sure that, um, those are being added, but they all, I shouldn't have announced this earlier, the planning department does have its own YouTube channel separate from, Mr. Hidden figured this one out. Um, separate from the, the Bonner County, um, I don't know why that was started, but for some reason, maybe because there's too many meetings getting lumped together, but we have our own, and that's, that's what this meeting is mainly strength stream to is, um, is our Bonner County planning, um, YouTube channel, so.
Uh, now, I know, minutes, I can exit, which is spelled boom. So, that is to be correct. Maybe a fanatics, y'all. But it's not the correct one, it's. Um, and then Susan Drumheller, uh, she was, she was representing seven B, so that should probably be here. And I would think the subject, um, of the comment should be there, which would be consultant. Possibility of retaining our consultant. With regard to the, uh, discussion and the workshop, you know, we haven't been putting any detail in there because we do have the YouTube recording. And, uh, normally, in minutes like this, it's more uh, more action items that are, that are reflected, and we didn't have any, so workshops don't have action items by definition, so that's, if we wanna change that, if we wanna have a little more um, detail in, in these discussions on the workshops, we can, but I, I think we're probably better off just relying on YouTube. But anyway, that's my thought. All right, with those, uh, modifications, anybody else have any more, any comment? I, I, your, your comment, Eric, is well taken. I, I understand your concern and mind as well. Uh, if not, uh, as amended, the, uh, minutes are, are approved. But we'll move to public comment. State your name, please.
Hi, I'm Brent Baker, Bonner County resident, and I'm the executive director of Ponray Economic Partnership, which is Bonner County's economic development organization. And, uh, I wanted to share, what do we have, five minute limits, when we speak up here?
We haven't got a limit.
No limits, okay. Uh, but I'll try to.
And a hearing. Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, what I've noticed from, uh, doing the job the past two and a half years is that where, where I think we're not adequately addressing our needs from the economic development perspective and community development perspective is in two areas that I see in, uh, I don't have specific recommendations how to solve these, but I'd like to open a conversation, how we integrate these concerns into the process, and to the extent it's too big a problem to be incorporated fully by the time this goes through its process, uh, eventually, as a community, we need to carry the conversation forward and be talking about it, and those, the first one is regarding uh, industrial zoning. We've had three times now, I've had to turn away potential new businesses starting up that uh, could have created up to a hundred and fifty full-time jobs, all paying better than the median wage in the county, which is what we're trying to do, more higher-paying jobs is a big part of our mission, and, uh, but to do it in a way and with industries that are compatible with who we are and how we live and what we wanna see in Bonner County, and part of the problem is there aren't enough, we don't have enough big parcels anymore, uh, that will accommodate a business that has a rail spur. We have, we have rail, which is great, that's a big part of transportation, infrastructure is critical for economic development. And we do have rail and the, uh, ability to restore or poke in some new rail spurs here and there, but we don't have enough property to accommodate these businesses, they're usually looking for, uh, you know, fifty to a hundred and fifty acres with rail spur and all season paved road. Access to adequate power, which having spoken with, when they're with a Vista, I've checked with the Vista, and Vista can, can deliver, you know, being, being on the the system, that having hydroelectric power, we have the ability to provide the power. And we have the rail, but what we don't have is the zoning and the space to accommodate these businesses. We used to have bigger industrial spaces, when we had the bigger mills and lots of mills around, but then when those got infilled and taken over by uh, the need for housing, so when places like, you'll know, P Mill get taken over, but now it's all housing, now there's no industrial space. Like, and that, that's kinda core infrastructure need for the long-term viability of the county, and we're not providing for that type of space, so I'd say, the, without making any specific recommendations, I'm just saying that it's hard for me to do my job, uh, and help create those higher-paying jobs, cause we have a lower median wage than the state as a whole, and the state of, as a whole, has a lower median wage than the nation as a whole. So it would be helpful if we could find a way to get some bigger parcels set aside for light industrial development with access to rail, wherever that potential exists, we need bigger, like little five acre pieces don't do anything for you. By the time you have room for trucks to turn around and park and move, and five and ten acre parcels, twenty acre parcels just don't do anything for you. And we're just left with some leftovers, so that's a big concern of mine. And then the, uh, other one is on the agricultural side, a big part of what our organization, uh, uh, values is our rural nature, we get, we are a rural county, we can get a grant as a, uh, uh, a rural economic development county from the state of Idaho every year. And agriculture is very important to us as a business, and my concern is the, the proliferation of uh, five acre zoning throughout the county, just how many spaces there are that are being eaten up or potentially eaten up by five acre parcels. Now, as someone who moved here to do agriculture almost fifty years ago, I know that you're not gonna do much agriculture on five acres, but you can, you can do homesteading or small specialty crops, a little bit, but mostly what happens when you have lots of five acre parcels is you get lots of weeds, right? And worse hunting and fishing, less active timber management, and less real agriculture. So I see lots of negatives to proliferate, people want that freedom, they want that little space, they want that little homestead, I, I can't blame them at all. And for a lot of people, they're not gonna be able to afford much more than a five acre parcel, so I'm not saying it shouldn't exist, but I think we have way too much of it. And I would like to see, I'm really happy that we passed as a state the Agricultural Protection Act, but it wasn't enough. It was like too little, too, too late with not enough incentives to the farmers. But what really we need to be doing from my organization's point of view is protecting and providing for larger parcels. Really, you know, that we should be looking at twen- where we're looking at fives, I'd like to see twenties plus in those areas, because lots of fives, like I said, I've just seen it over and over and over again. You know? Lack of, lack of access, lack of recreation, uh, and, uh, the weed problem gets worse. Like I say, the hunting, fishing, recreation, weeds, productivity, it all goes downhill, so. Those are the two big things we see, we wanna see limitation on, on the five acre sprawl and, uh, provision for more industrial space for jobs. I'm happy to work on it with, anybody who will work on it with me, to, you know, specifically on the maps.
Are you taking a look at the, our proposed map?
I, I have, but I haven't had a chance to in detail go through and say, I'd like, you know, this changed here and that, I, I haven't worked out detailed proposals, I've just recently been discovering, they're just, I can't get things done with the way. And a lot of it has, it might be zoned, okay, we have to look at it, or just the parcels, cause they're, they're owned. They've been broken up into smaller pieces, and now it's not the zoning, it could just be the fact that it's owned by smaller ownership. I don't know what the problem is, but I know there's no property available, why don't we look?
Well, if you look at the, the map, I think you'll see a lot of the area, especially in the Sully Valley, for instance, and other areas as well, is, is out under this proposed, uh, map, the land use map, is that course. Which, you know, and from a zoning standpoint, would be a minimum of ten, mostly twenties, probably. Zoning hasn't been addressed by this group yet, but the, that's the, that's the idea of that, that course would be tens of twenties, and obviously, it can be more than forty, it just has to be a minimal, not a maximum, so. But we can't do anything about. Who owns it, so.
Yeah, right.
And with regard to the industrial area, I mean, I, I put it on the map, and you, you know, you could, you know, again, that was very much depends on, on ownership, the people who want that. Uh, you know, this, this commission is always trying to balance the, the community's very, very strong desire to keep rural uh, with, you know, there's, there's obviously commercial needs as well. And we have designated some areas next use, I don't know any of those areas would meet your definition of fifty to a hundred acres, I doubt it. But, uh, you know, I just, I, I urge you to look at the map and read the component, the land use component. Might also take a look at the economic development component as well, cause I think I was mentioning more about that, so. Um, yeah, well, thank you for.
You know, you're, thank you for the comments.
I heard a question, so Brent.
Yes.
Uh, so when people come in, they're looking, are they, are they looking both in the cities and in the county to see what's there, just searching, or are they focusing like up on the Baldy area or something?
Well, they're usually looking broadly, they're looking in western Montana, northern Idaho, and eastern, they're looking regionally, they've identified this region as someplace good, so it's kind of a competition to see who's gonna get them, is the way they look at it, and they, they, they send you a list of, here are our requirements, and we can't even get past, we can get kinda close sometimes, but we just really can't get to where, to what they're looking for to attract those better paying manufacturing, I mean, I look at our, the federal level right now, the whole emphasis is on bringing manufacturing back home to America, I'm all for that, but like, okay, well, where are we gonna put it? You know, it's like, I like a piece of that action, but, and not just anywhere, you know, I think it's really interesting, I just, uh, But and not just anywhere, you know, I think it's really interesting, I just attended a workshop recently on the, what was it, is it the fiftieth anniversary or something? No, the hundred, seventieth anniversary of the Port of Lewiston. And interestingly down there, when they created the Port of Lewiston, they created a huge industrial space to go as part of the port, that the port had control over, and it was huge when they created, it was like ten thousand acres or something. But, and that was, that's been functionally operational since, I don't know, the nineteen fifties or something. And they still, they haven't, they didn't just like sell us, the first person that made an offer, get it. They looked at, what's your business? What are you going to produce? What are the jobs going to pay? Is it clean manufacturing? Is it going to support our community? And they're, they're still identifying and bringing in very selectively, what are the right businesses for our area that relate to who we are and what we're trying to do. So it's not, it's not something where it's just a business deal, get it done, rezone it, sell it, it's like controlling, and, and it is the, in, in a way, it's, they've got the highest median wage in the state down out of the Port of Lewiston. High standard of livings, lower housing costs, they, because they planned it in advance to center around the economic development and to be selective about what happens out of the Port of Lewiston, they've had some, some real success economically as a result, phenomenal success, really.
You know, it seems to me though that you're looking at something like that, it's probably better suited for one of the cities. I think they would, they, they have the ability to, to deal with that, maybe in some of their areas of impact as well.
Yeah, I think so, I would agree with you there and that's where I'm thinking the most likely quickest result will be.
Urban services, which is what you would require, that thing is, is in cities, not in areas.
True, it will be in the, in the county, but in the area of impact around the cities. And, and San Point is so constrained, my guess is it's going to be Priest River. More likely than anybody else.
Establish the industrial park up there, that's.
Yeah, around the airport, we have some good industrial land there and they have rail there from the old mills and the current mills.
I just don't know about fifty or a hundred acres.
Yeah, that's, that might be hard to find, but that's just what's come, I've had three of those come across my door in the past.
Might as well ask.
Opportunities, yeah, and they're just, we're not going to compete with some other areas on those, but it made me start looking and then talking to the city. And the city said, yeah, we know of one, maybe I'll talk to the owner and see if he's interested, and it was like, and no, the answer was no, so it's like, it was just to kind of miss it, it's just a lost opportunity for, on the job side of things is, is the way I see it. But Susan also mentioned something in a private conversation, yeah, and that's what you were saying about in interpretation of, I can't remember what we were talking about, you mentioned something about interpretation within a particular zone right now, there's.
I think it was the mixed use.
In the mixed use.
Mixed use allows industrial, but it also allows residential, commercial.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's just that.
And that's why it's going to be more commercial, that's not going to be industrial type activity typically.
The only place, the only place, as far as I understand, where industrial zoning would be allowed.
In, in the comp plan, mixed use. That's where it would be.
Yeah. Otherwise, it's going to be city.
The areas, the mixed use. And probably find it fifty to a hundred acres, but.
The only one offhand I can think of is up there at the old mill of the Santos.
That's already an industrial park?
Yeah, well, oh, it hasn't, I, they can expand that.
Yeah.
That's along with rail and everything else right there on the highway, so.
But.
That's not that big right now.
And I think going forward for the bigger conversation, you know, not, not necessarily for anything right at hand today, but for the bigger conversation, there's, there are experiments that have been conducted successfully elsewhere in the world where these problems have been solved, like in Europe. If you go to Italy and France and look at how they do their industrial development, they create industrial zones that are in essence their own little city outside of the city, they don't try and put it in the city, they extend the services out. Typically, it's going to be out, I'm going to say, maybe five kilometers outside of town.
Sure.
And it's its own little access coming into the, to the industrial zone where trucks can get in, there's a rail link going through it, and everything's developed there for the businesses, and they don't try and have people living in those manufacturing zones in amongst it where there's conflict, they just create
Right.
the space for it, they service it. And then over time, they develop that out and they have manufacturing all over, instead of just having it in big what are now like, what we have, rust belts across a lot of our country, they create littler, smaller industrial spaces, but kind of everywhere, but in their own little mini-city outside the city. Kind of an interesting concept, seems to work.
The other part that I, from what we've been involved with the last two and a half years, beyond that, seven or eight years, getting the population of the county to see the need for and say, okay, let's, let's set some areas on that. We ran up against that time and time again, nope, they don't want it, don't want it, for the saves, don't want it, the county's not in my backyard.
Yeah, yeah, we, we have an interesting demographic in that regard, so.
That's going to be one of the challenges, even if a parcel owner says, yeah, let's try. It's going to be that, so.
Yeah, so, well, it's something to work on.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you, good to see you.
Okay. Anybody else? Surprise, surprise.
Hi, well, um, you know, we, at the meeting, oh, I'm sorry, Susan Drumheller with Project Seven B, and I live in Sabo. So, we were, Jake Gabel and Alan Songstad and myself and Commissioner Don Kay and a few others, I imagine there's going to be some discussion about the meeting we had Friday. And I didn't know if, if you wanted me to say anything about that, but and I was not at the Bonner County Commissioners Meeting today, but I do have a copy here. I forgot to print it out, of the revised memo, okay, good, you have it, yeah. So I just, just wanted to say I'm here, I, I don't know when you're having that discussion, I don't have a copy of the agenda. Next, okay, well, I'm just here if you want to ask any questions. I will be working.
The general item, so.
Okay, okay, great.
So.
All right, thanks.
We can talk about it when the, when that comes up on there. A lot of yous talk about it with us, because I, I have questions about the memo.
Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, I did my best to try to capture the spirit of the discussion, what we, what we all kind of what the consensus was. And then for myself, I just, I just wanted to, I was thinking about after the last meeting I was here where Kyle Schreiber got up and spoke about the Schweitzer development, and I just wanted to echo some of his concerns, I, I really feel like the commissions should be consistent in the way that you handle split parcels, and it appears to me that at least in one or two of the changes that you made at the request of Schweitzer Mount Properties, that you instead of going with what's predominantly the land use designation in that area or the zone that, that you went with the recreation resort designation, and I just think that at this, in this process, I think you should stay consistent with the way you've been handling that from county, for consistency's sake and fairness. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
A response? Yes, Lance Badger, Schweitzer Properties. Again, with all due respect, we can agree to disagree. I think if you were to stay with the, the process or the consistency, then you, you would match it, the, the bench piece and make that part of the comp plan designation that you did.
Yeah, the other piece.
The other piece, and so, you know, if you look at the map that I sent to all of you in that letter, it's always been designated or identified as part of the future of the resort. And it's also part of the same ownership, although it's been somewhat divided with the Alterra purchase. So I, you know, in a perfect world, I would ask that you actually stick with what we came in with before, what this board had supported for. And when we get into the process of actually adjusting the zoning, all of those lands will be subject to P D D or have to be subject to a P D D. So it's all contextual part of the resort.
I do, I do appear.
Well, we have an existing P D D, it would be basically, I'm going to get to include it in that same set of rules and regulations and design guidelines and road standards, et cetera, so it's all consistent. The other thing I would add is that you also may have received, and I'm pretty sure you did same time I sent the letter, some alternative language relative to a resort designation, because you had recreation and community. And Schweitzer originally was Alpine Resort Community, which is, it's the only Alpine resort in the area, so it has a unique, and I think some of you even use the word unique set of circumstances, so. I don't know if you considered that language or not, it was just some thoughts that Daniel and myself put together and thought you guys would.
I mean, again, I don't recall saying it, but what was it, what was the language?
You want to?
Some of the public comments under Mr. Badger. Okay. Yeah, but we can read it.
I, I think it would be helpful, it was when you were making changes to the text, you were considering other people's comments and changing them, we thought this would be one way to help clarify. Can you read it?
Daniel Brad, Schweitzer Round Properties. So the proposed language, the fund, the public comment we submitted, and this is only the proposal from S and P is quote, the Alpine Community Designation is intended to accommodate residential, recreational and commercial development within the unique natural environment of an Alpine region, where adequate water, sewer services as determined by relevant agencies such as I D Q, P H D, or I W R are provided. This designation focuses on preserving scenic beauty, the ecological integrity and the outdoor recreation opportunities inherent with mountain landscapes. The Alpine Community is designated to create a sustainable harmonious living environment that complements the natural Alpine setting, encourages tourism and provides you around recreational activities while safeguarding sensitivity, the sensitive ecosystem and minimizing the environmental impacts of development as a land use designation. So updating the current Alpine Community Designation to this. And to kind of echo what Susan said as far as staying consistent and putting land use designation, I think using the descriptors in the new definition that you guys have proposed should be followed if you're going to be looking at lands and using those descriptors would be helpful as well.
Not just try to do with the recreation land use designation is to cover the two different zoning districts, which is the Alpine Village and.
Right.
So we try to make the recreation land designation pretty general. Division in there, I think you mentioned skiing, all that concept. But yeah, I understand, so we'll talk about that.
Yeah, and we'd like the, the language that was proposed, but after listening to Dave Bowman's comments and some of the edits that he made, that spurred us on to really think about us and possibly retain Alpine Community Designation just as a suggestion. However, if you're going to follow the, the definition that has been crafted over the past year, I think following those descriptors for these properties makes sense as well, not just looking to see how something might be split zone, but some majority or not to it, it should really go, you should look at land use descriptors, help guide that decision as well.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Trump, I'm kind of curious, because Alpine, one of the, the zones that we're going to have are any recreational. Are we maintaining that Alpine?
Yeah.
Okay. And that language, I think, would be great in the, in that.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, we don't, you know, we don't, we don't intend to modify any of the design criteria at all, because that's stuff that's already there from the Alpine Village. Why, we tried to make that clear, we had a lot of public comments about, well, you know, there's now there's no, there's, there's no design criteria and all this kind of stuff above three thousand feet, well, all of that's in the, in connection with the zoning of the Alpine Village and all the criteria that goes with that, so we're not limiting any of that, so.
Right, and just add an extra layer, the P U D is more restrictive than the county code. And within that P U D, there had to be C C N Rs, which are far more restrictive than state code and the Bonner County Code. Bringing all those properties under the P U D.
We're not messing with the P U D.
It's imposing greater restrictions ourselves than would be allowed by the county. Yep.
Let's make it one short.
Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, I mean, I know that I wrote comments that address the language regarding the design standards for the Alpine community, and I understand that it is in the language of the zoning code now, but the comp plan guides zoning, and so if there's not some language in the comp plan and land use component that talks about the need to be, you know, in these areas as well as, you know, perhaps language that talks about special considerations for, you know, development, you know, high-density development, recreation development next to our waterways, then we don't have the assurance that those protections are going to remain in the code, even though that may be your intention right now, like, oh, we're not going to change the code, but if somebody down the road, like the next commission decides that eh, we don't really need that language in the zoning code, if it's in the comp plan, then it'll carry over to the zoning code, and that's why we wanted to retain some of that language, some of that intention in the land use component, because I think it's important, because that is the guiding document that determines how the codes are written.
The way that the land use component now reads, it specifically references the Alpine district. So.
Yes, but I think it would not hurt to retain some of the language that's in the current land use component, just to ensure that those design standards are retained as well in that zone, thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? Okay, okay, yeah.
So, Daniel Brad, S and P Properties.
You have a debate going.
No, not a debate, just building on, because I think it's a, Susan's got some great ideas. If you want to build on it, that's why we crafted that language, we're not suggesting the board should adopt it, it was just some ideas we had inspired by other community members to do, we're happy with the resort that, I guess, some resorts for recreational community designation. What we've set forth for consideration are more restrictive than what is laid out and recommended by the Plan Commission, we're happy with what the Plan Commission has come up with and feels that those descriptors will meet our needs as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to, nobody else, I'm going to close public comments. And we'll go with the first act, which is a response to the request for. I have given a, I received a memo from Seven B and that connects to Land Trust, which I've I've given to each of the commissioners. And this was sent to the Mr. Donphy as well. Does have some bullet points regarding a scope of work, which in my reading of it is inconsistent with some of the other parts of it, which is seems to be focused on the land use component, whereas the bullet points seem to be more general in terms of the comprehensive plan and goals and taxes and policies. I did attend the meeting on Friday. And I thought I made it pretty clear that I thought that the, that the Plan Commission was going to, because of the time and we've spent and the amount of public input that we've received, that we were going to make our recommendation. Hopefully on the, on the twenty-second of April, when it's set for hearing. At least we'll, we will consider making a recommendation at that time. And then it will be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners. And they, they would, they would express an interest in having one or possibly two workshops. And my suggestion at that, at the meeting on Friday, I'm pretty sure I said this, was that, you know, the Plan Commission will move forward, they have this recommendation, the Board of County Commissioners would then receive that recommendation. And hopefully, they would have a workshop with us. And hopefully they would have a workshop with us. And if they still had concerns or questions or thought that consult would be. Helpful. That, you know, they could, they could consider hiring a consultant at that time. That the planning commission would like to move forward. With what we have, whatever modifications we make tonight, and and I guess now. Next meeting as well. So that's what I said, I also said that. We, it's it's as far as reviewing the policies. And I view that as the implementation plan. The implementation plan as it currently exists. Was the planning commission's review. Of the then current comp plan. And to try to make better. Goals, objectives and policies. Based upon the old comp plan. We have not reviewed. The goals. And policies or goals, objectives and policies. I've seen several. Comp plans that don't deal with objectives, they just deal with goals and policies, which I think may be a good idea. But we haven't dealt with that with regard to the fourteen components that have been approved by the. For the county commissioners. And we have as well as the. The land use component. So I, my view of that was that. It's premature to. To have that reviewed, where we haven't done it ourselves. I think the mission is probably. The most familiar with what those components say. And we'll go back and review those and come up with. Any modifications of the of the implementation plan that applies to each of those components, so. That's what I said at the meeting on Friday. So far as this is concerned. I would, I would suggest. That the planning commission adopts my. My set at the meeting on Friday, but you know, that's up to, that's up to the group. Anyway, that's, that's what I said. And Susan, if you want to reply to that, it's okay with me.
I just want to clarify, um, the the bullet points that talk about the scope of work. Um, if you read the. Two sentences above it, I mean, that's contained in there so that you understand what the estimates were based on. So the scope of work would be up to the county ultimately. And we do ask in here that we could, you know, collaborate on that. In in part because. We are going ahead and going for this grant application, so. If we have a scope of work that's wildly different. Um, or much greater, as you know, there'd been some discussion about maybe the consultant helping with. Code. Language or whatever, I mean, then we wouldn't have an authority, right? So this was just to come up with an estimate. This doesn't have to be. The proposed scope of work exactly, and actually what I was trying to do with the. Points below. Was capture what I thought was the consensus of the discussion on Friday and. I, you know, I don't know. What Mr. Gabell. Uh, came away with, but. This was what I understood was there was a discussion of the two. Phased process. One of which would. Provide some. Review of the land use component, that's what I thought I heard. And um, and then the other one was to. Provide some input on the implementation chapter, that's that's the two phases that I heard, so I tried to capture that here, I'm sorry if it didn't. It doesn't um, mesh exactly what you heard.
I guess it's a, it's a timing issue, I mean. You know, I have, I have, I have concerns about the, about the proposal, but. It seems to me that I I I don't, again, I'm not, I'm just, I'm the one that's talking here, but the commissioners, you know, uh. I don't, I don't see how. Input from a consultant at this point with the land use. Is going to be helpful. We're, we're ready to make a recommendation. You know, uh, there's been. There's been discussion at the, at the board of. You know, different things regarding land use component. And the problem always is, they don't have a recommendation. So it's not even in their hands right now, we have to make a recommendation. So we're going to make a recommendation, that that's why, I don't know, I'm just one person. My suggestion was we make a recommendation and then the Board of County Commissioners do what they want to do with it. You know, that's, that's, that's what I said on Friday, I don't know how that would be misinterpreted. And the same really goes true with the. That the implementation plan, the goals, objectives and policies. You know, we, we haven't reviewed those yet. And I guess, you know, from a. Just a background standpoint and I guess a process standpoint too. Is that the land use component. Is supposed to come out, not the land, the whole comprehensive plan. And as well as the policies are supposed to be. Developed. With community input. We've had that community input. The last two and a half years. And a lot of that's reflected in 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 written comments, some of them from you, Susan. Uh, some from others, um, and as well as. Open meetings and all of which are recorded. It, my, my experience is when consultants are part of. Are retained with regard to a comprehensive plan or any kind of plan like this. Is that they're, they're involved in gathering their community input and they're gathered, they they gather that. And they, they put it together and present it, all that kind of stuff. And they're very instrumental in in drafting, actually writing the plan. And I think that was even said at the meeting this morning, that the consultants write the plan and then. The planning commission reviews it, let's not what we've done. Doesn't happen that way. So for a consultant to come in at this point. And after, they would have to review. It seems to me all of the community input that we've got. And they could do that, all they have to do is listen to two and a half years of. Planning Commission recordings. I don't know of any consultant that's going to do that for ten thousand dollars. They'd also have to review five hundred comments that we've got on. On the map and the and the texture of what land use component. That's going to take them a while. Plus, we've had, you know, we've had. Meetings like this. That we've all, that we've received public comments, so. Anyway, whether that's a valid concern, a valid. Probably beside the point, I I just think that. The planning commission needs to move forward, I think we then need to. Address the comprehensive plan. The implementation plan. With regard to the components that have been. That have been approved already.
Just one more comment, um, I don't think the intention here is to have the planning consultant. Come up with, you know, content or try to. You know, interpret the public input differently, and in fact, the scope of what they would review is is up in the air at this point. Um, and could be determined later. And how much of that public comment they review, I mean, that again is. Nothing's nailed down here. Um, and in the language, in the intention around the language is to, again, this idea of consistency. Clarity, ease of implementation. Um, the timing, I mean, I don't see any reason why you couldn't continue with what you're doing. And if the commissioners want to go forward with this, they can still. You know, conduct that review, so I don't think it has to. Necessarily impact the process.
That's sort of what I'm suggesting, I think, yeah. Is that what I said?
So, so basically, what I, what I'm saying is that. This review, if it comes about, if the Board of County Commissioners approves that, it used to be at their level, not at our level. Yeah, so.
And in their timeframe.
I agree on their side, but for what, for what our purposes, what we're doing is too late. We're already there, and it needs to get. Put to the board, it's been two and a half years. But having the consultants in my line of work, it's too late to have a consultancy come in, especially at that cost, I don't see how. They're going to add value to what we've done so far. If they want to review a recommendation, then the county must. They get involved in that, that's fine, but I don't see how they would add value to what we've done so far.
Yeah, and I think the first um, phase is. Essentially exactly as as you have described. I guess I heard differently how the second phase would come forward based on what. Um, Commissioner Domkey discussed at the meeting, so I must have misunderstood. Or um, maybe there's just wasn't as much consensus as I thought. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Susan. When you first started speaking that. My mind might be playing tricks on me, it's been a while, but uh, did you say something about collaborating? Collaborate with. Collaborate, who would be collaborating with who?
Well, we just, we just wanted to have. Some input on the scope of work when that's developed, because we being Kynix Land Trust and Project Seven B. Because we are, we are coming up with the money to do this, but we are going to give the money to the county. So the county would be the one doing the request, request for proposals, putting together the scope of work and hiring this person. So it would be the county's project, we're coming up with funds. For it.
But, but. Actually more of the review. Uh, seven B, Knicks who would not be going over the review, collaborating with them.
Oh, no, no, we would, we would request that we get a copy of the final report so we can report back on the grant. Funds, so.
I must have misunderstood, thank you.
Okay, so, um, this actual item is. I got all the tables up here. So the board had a discussion about this this morning and. Part of, it was just a discussion, it wasn't an action item, it was, uh, and they did have some debate over this idea. And there was some reservations by some board member, but they really were um, looking for is more specific. You know, what is, what is the actual request? Right now, it's really just an idea. And I think from what I understand, um, it's an idea that we have some kind of external review of the product that's been. Created thus far. And then the second part of this idea is, does the planning commission want a consultant to assist in revising the goal policies and objectives? The implementation component, so I think those are two distinct ideas that, from what I understand from that meeting last week. Um, so we have the, the one side with the board, it's either the board's action, um, I I think we all agree that. It's too late to get the, a consultant to review the proposed draft, nor do we want to stop the planning commission from moving forward, so I think we all agree. We need to complete this process, make a recommendation to the board, and from what I gathered, I I believe the board is still going to move forward with their process. And then. Ha- as a. Parallel to this, have a, a review done by a third party to see what changes, if any, need to be made to the current. Uh, or to the, um, what's been adopted thus far, then you have this second concept. Uh, does the planning commission want um, external help? In in updating. Um, the goals, policies and objectives to be more in line with what's now been adopted and must be proposed in the land use component. That, that's from my understanding, and then.
Thank you.
Okay.
That, that sounds, that sounds right, yeah, and I wasn't at the meeting today, so like.
Oh, you're good, so the board would like, as, as one of the stakeholders in this, in these two concepts. Um, the planning commission is essentially the response, so A, are you okay with, or what's your response to this idea of an external review? Knowing that if there's findings of that, um, it would be given to the planning commission to make updates to either some or the various components of the land use components. The land use components have been adopted thus far, and then what's your response to the second idea, which is, do you actually want assistance on, on the. Need of the update to the implementation component, so.
Well, me. So if we make a recommendation. Then, you know, we send it off to the, to the Board of County Commissioners. And based upon either their input or. Or our consultant's input, they want to make changes, it seems to me that's up to them, why would they send it back to us?
Well, because most, most of the components have already been updated, so it depends on what the scope of work is. So you have either the scope of work being the entirety of the comp plan, including the adopted, or just the land use components, I think that needs to be. Figured out, and that's part of the lack of.
Yeah, I think there is uncertainty, I mean, there's confusion about that, because the very first bullet point. Seems to be the entire comp plan. So, you know, is it, is it the entire comp plan, or is it just the land use component, as Susan said? You know, she put these in here because that's what they gave the people for a bit, right? So you don't want to change it. Right?
Well, that is kind of right.
No, that was just to get an estimate. Yeah, so we could.
Well, this is what, this is what they were getting to get a, give an estimate.
So. Well, that's what I thought we were doing, so I thought we need to, we need to formulate a response or I, you know, just tell me what to say and I'll. What could, I told you what I, what I think. I don't think we need, I, I don't think we need. I think, I think whatever the consultant reviews needs to be done at the board level, not at this level. We haven't done, we haven't redone the implementation plan yet, I don't think that's going to take us a whole lot, lot, lot of time to do. And I think that we've, you know, we're prepared to move forward. With whatever alterations are necessary because of the. Data in the, in the land use analysis. We're ready to move forward. And. Essentially. The response is, I would envision it. With the agreement of the rest of the commission. Is that whatever review the consultant does, they do it at the Board of County Commissioners level, not at this level. Yes. So I. I agree. That it should be at the commission level, however. For the. Potential review by a consultant and then possibly something gets changed. Or there's a recommendation that they would pay, all this needs to be changed or updated or whatever, so the board. When you look at. Chapter sixty five, title sixty seven. It. Says that we, the planning commission, have the authority of the board to make recommendations to them on changes and updates. To the comprehensive plan and a process and so forth. So I'm not so sure, we're this back and forth and they review our stuff and then they have something else to do, and then they say, oh, by the way, they should do this. I, I, I don't know, we, we've had. Very few comprehensive plan amendments that have come directed from the board. If any. That I can remember in ten years. So I, I'm not sure, maybe that is a legal opinion, how that flows. Um, you know, the, the duties of the planning, which also say. The board can direct the commission to do additional work, but say work on the comp plan, it says additional. So I, I'm not sure legally where that sits. And that would be a red flag to me.
I don't think that's the board directing you to make a change, I think what they're asking for is your input on an external review.
If we say, sure, go ahead and have your, have your consultant do this. Is that for not? If there's some conflict with the state code. Or or what, I, I don't know. Kind of drop it through the door and look at it, or.
I think we all agree if there's findings from that saying. Oh, X, Y and Z from the population component needs to be updated, that definitely is within your realm of.
Right, right.
Of Jersey.
Again. Go back to beginning, if all of this had come to us. Earlier with with some timeframe that we might have taken advantage of it, that would have been the time, because then we would have handled it totally in our own wheelhouse. And I'm just concerned about if it's stepping out, we're going to make a recommendation, which is what's required of us. They're going to take it up. And deal with it, but there's no. There's no procedure provision there other than the pure public involvement process that's already in code. So, um, I, I'm not sure with the A part, the first. Phase, yes, I agree, it needs to be. With the commissioners to take that action, the B part, I am not sure. I just don't, uh, well, we, we'll face that when we get there. Yeah, well, but we have to make a recommendation or a response back to the board tonight on those divisions. Well, all, what I envisioned was that we would only be responding on behalf of. Well, we'd be responding with regards to the largest component in terms of our recommendation. Their review once it gets there, and the same would be true of the goals. Yeah, the goals and objectives, right, I, I don't see timely. Participation by a consultant, either of these for us, or what we're doing right now. And then if the, you know, if the consultant says, this is really, you know. A bad piece of work and, you know, you need to redo it, but whatever. Without any specific recommendations, I, I guess we'll have to face that, if there are specific recommendations, well, you know, you should do. Uh, X, Y and Z and, and then it'll be just hunky dory. There's no reason why they would have to serve to me, I mean, I, I. I, I don't see why I would have to come back to us, they could make the change themselves, yeah. And because we have made a correct, made a recommendation, it doesn't say, the code doesn't say they have to accept our recommendation.
No, it doesn't, but it, it. It doesn't, it's quiet on the whole issue, it just talks about.
And in fact, you know, if you recall, when. We redid the implementation plan based upon the old comp plan. Uh, we sent it to the board and they substantially revised it. I change all subtle language, I know, I recall, yeah, I do. Uh, yeah, alright, hey, hey, they did, I mean, it was more of a. Changing. Childish, uh, that kind of stuff, but.
Call it they added more coverage or deleted coverage or those kind of things, no.
Yeah, well, they did, they did, they did, they did write some things. To make it a comp plan, a comprehensive plan. Language rather than. Alright, any, any other comments? Do you want me to, do you want me to draft a response? Basically of what I just described.
Just as a first time person on this board and you're looking at this, what is happening over the last ten years is almost if you hire a consultant to come in. It's almost like, why, why, why am I sitting here if you're gonna have somebody else? Tell us, we did a good job or we didn't do a good job. Um, that's just my. I agree with Alan a hundred percent on this, the consultant is way too late for this, this should have been done six months ago. I think. Six months ago? Um. Just this paper alone, this ten to fifteen thousand, I think is grossly under, I think you're looking at fifty to a hundred thousand. And I don't know how much. The five thousand dollars at that meeting, at the last county commissioners meeting where the county would put up five thousand, it's been taken out. To either the county. That's already in debt to begin with as it is, um. And then you put it back onto the county commissioners to basically run this. If it did get approved, which, you know, that's just a side note, but. I agree with you, Alan, I don't think we need any. Comprehensive, uh, this proposed, that proposed to us.
Any else? It's not the, well, the, of the group that I'll, I'll draft. Any response that will basically support what I just described. Do we need a vote on this? We need a vote on this as an agenda and what it says with decision.
So I see this as an action item, um, I, I, and I added up, added it as an action item, so the, the planning commission can make a motion. You can, in your deliberation, I think you have a general idea, if you have all the agreement as to what your response is, so uh, an act, a. A motion that simply says, you know, uh, I move that we. Or that the chair drafts a memo, uh, to the board county commissioners stating our response to this idea, or something along those. And it gives then Alan the authority to, to write this on behalf of the planning commission. And then, um, we'll present that to the board. So I think Commissioner Donkey said he's adding this to the agenda against the next Tuesday. And this is just part of another data point, another, um, stakeholder input to this idea. Uh, so we'll add it, rather than me presenting this or Alan, I think my, my, my thought is that we give it to Commissioner Donkey, cause he's kind of running ahead with this. Uh, or a little lead on it, uh, for the planning or for the, the board, um, and then he can, uh, take, take, uh, your guys' uh, to rest.
When is their agenda go out?
Thursdays or Friday, I think Friday morning typically is when they post it. Sometimes it's Thursday, sometimes it's Friday, usually it's on Friday.
So I should get this, this response to you by Thursday? Or earlier?
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually out, uh, talent Thursday and Friday, so get it to Alex and, or send it right to the, to Mr. Donkey. Okay, as well. If you want my help drafting it, I'll be in tomorrow, I can, we can email back and forth.
They got a vacation?
My parents are in town, so I'm actually gonna spend a little bit of time with them, so. Been a long week, so I thought I'd take.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Mister Chairman, based upon the findings and facts and conclusions of long. Uh, U.S. Chairman, I make a motion that, uh, U.S. Chairman. Can collaborate with the staff to go ahead and put together a letter of response regarding our discussion of this.
Have a second?
Clarification on the motion?
Sure.
Do we wanna get a little more specific? With, as discussed in the meeting, I, I know it's recorded and all, but it's pretty.
Yeah, as discussed. As discussed with the mean, in this meeting.
If that's, that's okay.
Sure, alright. Alright, all in favor? Who cares?
Okay, we're moved to the workshop, comprehensive plan. Always the goals and objectives.
Um, so, um, with regard to the.
Where we, where we're gonna go, that the version fifteen was changed, decided they made or?
I moved it into. Something called final draft, because there were the handful of final version, final documents, they'll put them all into a final draft. Uh, folder, so that's, that's what I'm gonna pull up.
So it's not the fifteen, day three twenty-five?
So I have the, the graph or, or the charts that are in the annex B here, whatever, whatever annex it is. Uh, M X A. Um, those have been updated, but they're not in this component that I need a copy of ever. So I'll, I'll show those, they're in an Excel right now. It takes a little bit of formatting to get into Word, Word, but I can, um, show you what the final, final area, then you can make your. Let me know if you wanna change any of the criticisms. So. Dave suggests that we. Anything that's two, two decimal points over, just change it to one, is that right?
Yeah. As well, I just spoke something, the version fifteen is out there.
There's a holder label, it's final drafts. Or final draft. I know, I keep moving stuff around on here, sorry.
Yeah, there's kind of a grammar error kind of before that, well, let's, let's just go through these before we get to. The grass. I mean, to me, I would accept all of Dave's changes.
Agreed.
Uh, you know, eliminating the, you know, all the precision to the right, that's just one point I don't get to move back.
I will, I'll work through updating those. Um.
Just as a total, he's basically saying one significant figure to the right.
Okay, this is an updated, um. Land coverage map that was produced by V I S, so just know it looks different than previous ones, it's way better than what I put together, so. Um, it still has the same information as the streams, the water bodies, and then land ownership being stated in, uh, government. This is an updated table, um, that incorporates. We didn't have December thirty-one, twenty-four, we had as January second, twenty-five, I thought that was close enough. Uh, so this is just updated, um, percentage of, in acres and percentage of acreage, um. Uh, for the land use designation, these tend to be for the zoning. Uh, he did include, um, this came from G I S. He did include incorporated areas, uh, as far as the total acreage and what percentage of that is. And I only went to one digit over instead of two, and just had a feeling you guys would agree to that. Um, so if you, if you don't wanna include incorporated, uh, that, that's new to this version. Um, other than that, uh, that, that's the other, that's only the major changes. I thought it would be appropriate to update this table. Um, with any zone changes over the last year and a half or two years, then do the comp plan designation changes. This is assuming, or this is the current land use designations, not the, not the proposed.
I, I would leave it, the way it is, including incorporated.
Okay, that's fine. It just shows, uh, yeah, okay.
So, um, the whole table two. Has been updated, alright.
Table two.
Actually, this is, this is the one that needs to be redone, correct? Table two.
Section two point two or, wh- where are you at?
Table two, projected vacant land.
Oh.
Table two or?
Oh, figure two.
Well, it says table two.
That's figure two, is this the one you're talking about?
Mine says table two.
And then section.
That's way down, section. Three, five is where I see a table two. I got a different version on page nine.
Table two.
You're just going too far down. Keep going towards the top of the page, we're still under section two point.
Or two point three?
Yeah, yeah, two point three, where the, where the grass is all. I got ahead of you?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Well, he has some minor changes, apparently I misspelled assessor, don't tell me assessor, please. Um, other than that, he's a couple of minor.
Yeah.
These have all been up, all the figures in, uh, figures two through and six have all been updated with, with an update from twenty twenty-four. Um.
Excuse me, Jay?
Yes, sir.
Um, you know, we, we have roughly one point two million acres on the chapter one natural type. But then when you start getting down into your, uh, land use designation, we're over that one point two.
So the land use designations here aren't including any incorporated areas, which.
We're at one point one, two, um, if you look at the land use designation, we're at one point one, three. So I don't know how.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't get that before.
And the zoning district, we're over that amount too.
What are you comparing it to?
Well, I, it's just right, the very first, um, chapter one, chapter one, natural land type of gives you, uh, an.
Oh, okay.
So it's roughly. Yeah, but yeah, I mean, yeah.
A good catch, I can update those.
Why, I, I was just.
You know, the county just kind of grows sometimes and trends down. It, it also depends if you're including incorporated areas or not, which makes up a small change, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, but instead we've got these acreages that, that are, it's like more precise and table one, right? Even if it says roughly. It's, it seems like this is actually roughly more than one point one, three rather than one point one, two.
Well, yeah, because if you take nineteen, nineteen square miles.
Yep.
And multiply it by six forty. You get one point two two eight.
So roughly.
Roughly nineteen, nineteen.
Roughly long, like nineteen. I mean, maybe it's roughly, maybe it was nineteen eighteen, maybe it's nineteen twenty, well, then maybe more than one point one, two.
Well, that's what these tables on here says, this is one point one three.
Alright, let's take it this way. Seventeen hundred fifty square miles. One point one, two million acres. That's quite a jump. We lost two hundred square miles or something, somewhere. I wonder if the number is consistent and the G I S mapping should tell us what it is.
That's a good.
Cause we got the same numbers in all of our cumulative stuff, based on the, the comp plan designations and zones and. Ownership and everything, so.
Some of these might be including submerged lands or water.
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
Cause that's talked about the first part, the nine one, one hundred eighty-three square mile, but they're still adding hundred and eighty-three to that, doesn't bring it up to.
Well, I think we got this data from just from the old comp plan.
And I, I don't think this pair of, this section here, it's chapter one, has been changed much, right?
A little more concise, but I don't think we changed some numbers.
No.
Or say, make it one point one, three million acres roughly.
Nineteen, nineteen hundred square miles? Nineteen, nineteen, yeah, that's, that's half point two, three.
One by one, two, three?
Yeah. One point two two eight. Two, two. Two hundred twenty-eight thousand, one hundred sixty. Acres, okay, we'll just round out to one point three. Point one, three, one point one, point, point, no. Sure, we wanna do it, one point two, three, or that'd be the rounding, yeah. I know, so make it, it's just make it consistent.
Right.
The, this number is consistent, it's the nineteen, 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 apparently that's not right. Based on all that below. Yeah, but so somewhere by the.
Calculate the square miles based on the acreage.
Alright.
Um. We could just put approximately one point.
One point one, three, three, right up.
One hundred thirty-three thousand, eight hundred acres. Divided by six hundred forty acres. Is. What?
I see three other phones in use right now, hopefully you all come up with the same answer.
I know, it's, it's annoying. One, seven, seven, one, one thousand seven hundred seventy-two square miles, not nineteen, nineteen. If you take the number that we're using in the tables, and that's not discounted by. The difference between the two tables is just.
Is not one point one, two.
No. No, nineteen, nineteen is one point two, two, three. I don't know whether nineteen, nineteen, but I've seen that number time and time again. Nineteen, nineteen is the total square miles of the county. That's been a long time number.
Nineteen square miles is approximately one point two, two, eight.
Yeah.
Acres.
Well, how do we get, how do we get these, even if it were brought back, a so-called discount that's up above here showing. So you said nine point one percent or hundred and eighty-three miles? Yeah, that, it still won't get to nineteen, nineteen. Anyway, I'm, I think it's Mike something else to do. How many miles are there in the county?
Cause it's already, I mean. These numbers need to be consistent, yeah, to me, that's the whole thing.
The, the, um. The equation table one is gotta be. More accurate.
I would think so. Cause this, this came from G I S. So it should. You know, if you can coordinate the area correctly, it's gonna tell you what the square miles and acres are. Tracing the county boundary isn't too hard. Cities and which are also the I S. Cities and which are also G I S oriented.
Take out the water, okay, so we're we're gonna work on on making sure those numbers are consistent. Right, thanks.
Yep.
Uh, figure three, making parcels by zone, that's gonna change, but perhaps, right? Table analysis.
Figure three?
Yes.
It should probably change, yes.
Yes, I will update these with the new data.
And figure five.
Your percentages are off, is why the numbers are different. Now, if you go off by point. Five.
So if the rounding goes in like Dave was suggesting, then somebody's gonna look at it to equalize it, that's all. Pretty sure.
Good. Yeah, cause those extra decimals are gonna. Gonna work back down. So we need to make sure that those those calculate correctly. Like you can grab some, like, look over her shoulder.
I'll update all of these uh, with the new updated data.
And you'll have to, you'll have to. And based on the fact that we eliminated those extra. Decimals. Okay. And then pa- table two, which is the one I was getting down to. That also is gonna have to be revised. Or perhaps a little.
Oh, yes. Yeah. The B L P data is updated. The vacant land data is not. So the projected B O P applications. And how we compare against each other, it it will be a pretty nominal change, I don't think it's it's. Like. Ten or fifteen percent, right, it it's gonna be. Like I said, a pretty nominal change between the two, but yes, you're right, Mr. Carroll, I'll do that. And so. Paragraph. Or figure eight? Figure eight.
You say, you know, kind of that paragraph, the trend continues at approximately four hundred fifty single family. For single.
What chapter are you in?
I think. Uh, single family home building location permits per year.
He's under housing.
Put page three point five, page twelve. Page twelve. That conclusion may or might be not be accurate, so based on their schedule.
Page twelve still has section three point five in it?
Um, three point five starts on page eleven.
Right.
And but we're on the right above table two.
Are you looking at the page numbers or what word says the page is?
Oh. Page number on the side.
Okay, what word says it is, huh?
Down the bar on the slide.
That's.
Yeah. What I was looking at is on page twelve.
Yeah, that's the one that these be updated, once we get the new data analyzed.
Right.
Yeah.
So we can't really finalize this paragraph until you get that down.
Yeah.
Well, now I have a question for you, Jake, um, when does your notice have to go out for the twenty second? It has to be published in the paper Tuesday morning. Or Tuesday. Means we have to give the notice to the paper. Thursday or Friday of this week.
The notice is just a notice of need.
If you're, or hearing, so when we submit the notice, um, we have to have the final draft. Um, yeah. We have to have the final draft published as some saying this is what our draft is. But so when I spoke with Mike about the potential issue with the data. I my my backup plan was. We can roll with what we have right now, and if the data gets updated, we can present that at the twenty seconds. And present it as a change to be added to your recommendation to the board. You can make changes in your recommendation after hearing.
And given that it's probably not gonna be a huge change in data, that's probably the safest way to go is we stay on the timeline, correct?
So I I mean, I could, I I could show you guys what I. What I crunched essentially, what how to how it being rolled out, but like I said, I only got it today, so, um. I don't know how it like the lasting effect throughout all these different sections in the code. So it'll be some minor changes, but I don't think it's gonna be a substantial. Substantial difference. And that's in the, that is updated in the land use analysis tool that's available on the website.
It's what?
It's updated in the land use analysis application, the land use analysis tool. Um, that's that's on our website, same one that was built and that we we pull all this information out of. Our major hub for data.
Gosh, that's a lot as we looked at that, um. Let's see what, let's let's take a look at the land use analysis.
Well, here, here's everything I pulled out of it, um. I'm sorry. Everybody can see that, right? So. I've adjusted these numbers to exclude. Um, U S government, state of Idaho, platted common areas. Uninful tax exempt and commercial timber. It's the reason I've highlighted these is because these look like they're very small areas, because we we've not included commercial timber. Cause they're really, what we're trying to figure out is what could be in private ownership and developed into properties, right?
Right.
That's that's really what we were trying to determine is what's the demand and what's the potential moving forward, so. I highlighted that as like a. It's a discussion point. But if you look at the remainder of these, um, this is by zone, and then I have it by. This is a total number of parcels and then the. The vacant land by zone, so you can see every zone essentially is declining in total vacant.
So so where where is that vacant, okay, that's a vacant.
Yep.
So what are the tolls on that? Well, start is there's no change, well, I mean, go go down. So it says there's ten thousand nine hundred and eight.
So a decrease of six point nine percent in total number of vacant purple parcels. And eight point three percent of vacant acreage over a six year span. So like I said, the. The end result, I, we might need to adjust our numbers a little bit, but I think we still have a conclusion that we have enough vacant land to last for at least twenty years. If that's the six year demand.
I'm not saying that, Jake, I mean, so we're saying. This, this, this paragraph says. That we're over ten point five six thousand vacant properties, that says ten point. Nine oh.
Like we said, there was data that was missing, yeah.
There's more vacant parcels.
That's what Mike was getting at, is that there was a number of of properties that were not being included, the vacant lands. Would be included in the developed property essentially, or it wasn't being accounted for because it was listed under as null. So he utilized some other data sets to try to figure out what's vacant, what's not.
Exactly, potentially that's gonna bring it up.
Absolutely, so so let's just change, we'll cha- change this number in this paragraph to ten point nine oh. One nine thousand.
Fifteen.
Was that fifteen six? Which is the same, basically, that's the same.
Uh, we have a hundred and fifteen sixty three, so it's a hundred and fifty six thousand acres.
And we say in here fifteen point six. What? Well, whatever.
Not others, that's. Yeah, we just go with Dave's recommendations, and instead of getting so precise, just leave it as over ten thousand vacant properties.
Yeah.
So fifteen thousand acres.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that, then then this is right, it's it's, then it's, so then the conclusion, the conclusion is the same.
Yes.
Alright, that's what I was concerned about, okay, good, alright, we solved that problem. Then table two, you're gonna put the right numbers in there?
Correct.
So, well, I like what he did in the. This whole thing about the roads, that was correct, talked about that, everyone, it's a couple weeks ago. It's the funding as well as the terrain that is gonna limit where your roads publicly maintained and all roads go.
Yep.
So when do we have it actually? Okay. We have to have all this published on the website by Monday, is that your question?
Okay, so on the next. Well, it seems to me this is pretty much ready to go.
I I can update the the minor data points here and there, and then like I said, add in. To the very end, the annex, um, I've also, I copied the. Was it Dave that put together the list of what's considered rural character by the suburbs, and I put that in appendix B? So that's in here as well. Yeah, and then principles evaluated, I think that was last week's edition.
Right. That's still.
You know, I I had made a comment under four point one. Version fifteen, not this version fifteen, but before you move it to here.
Oh, yeah.
I don't see it in here, but.
Who was it, in the bullets?
Yeah, I was in the bullet, I think you had made a comment, it it where it says, uh, second bullet point. Uh, second sentence, many public services available to the private landlords and residents are located centrally, I think it should be our look, our located generally. At the county seat standpoint and their other eight cities, because I'm taking it safe.
Well, yeah, we and Alan mentioned the same thing, I didn't, okay, and I think we put in last week, we put in generally located instead of centrally.
Yeah.
Generally, generally located, but generally before located.
If you have some smaller block areas of the county that do have services and they're incorporated. Well, no, it was actually the sentence before that, uh, where it says.
Proximity.
Uh, no, where it says private landlords and residents are located. Generally, at the county seat, I understand we're using generally in two sentences back to back.
I mean, it's the same sentence, it's just two different lines, you mean? Second bullet.
Well, it says. Are generally located with easy access, but they're also. Generally located, you know, at the county seat standpoint, other eight cities.
Same sentence, it's just two different lines of the same sentence.
Yeah, but it's. I just don't want someone to get the get the thought that. Public services are only at the county seat in those eight cities, because that's not.
No, I get, I agree with you changing that first use, I think that's related to generally. And you can even say all the other eight cities. Um, you know, I. There is districts around the county, but and they're the providers, but they're all over the place. But not that many.
I think really, I think the where it says and, Bonner County and.
Yeah.
Should be or, Bonner County or are generally located, are are, you know, take generally out. Or are located within the access of the state highway system.
Well, yeah, okay, yeah, I don't, that changes it a bit, but still says the same thing.
Yeah.
Intense.
But I think that's a true statement.
Yeah.
It is.
Cause this goes along with the.
But you put generally located centrally, blah blah blah, and then or are.
I've got all those changes.
Yep, yep. He's got it. Any other changes? Right, just everybody read this, though.
Okay. Giving that. Yeah, um. They didn't have any comments on all the. All the designations. That's good.
Okay. And we're set to go, um. Any, uh, it's almost difficult to say this, but any, any, uh. Other changes to the map?
So we've, uh, incorporated all the changes that was requested last week, we still have, I think. Three split, three or four split designated areas, and those are ones you've all agreed on at the last meeting to leave. So. I don't want to bring it up a third time, just letting you know, there are still true to for one of the priests, and I think three in Segal, it might be two, I don't know. I think as a group, when I went back and listened again, because I have extra time to listen to you guys, I mean, like, um, I have, I went back and just just really made sure of giving the. A clear direction to G I S, um, so they updated all those, there's a proposed, um. Comp plan land use map. Let me show you, it's a giant PDF so that people can zoom way in, um, of course, it's in your final draft version. And then they're working on a a public viewer, I think, I was told that, uh. The chat had most of it done as of today, so this would be the, it's a stagnant PDF map, so someone can.
No.
You can zoom in, it's pretty high quality, meaning it's a, it's a very large file.
It's nice, warning, this may take a few minutes to load.
No.
Sorry, just.
Come back, I have not done a. A a review of this to ensure everything was done correctly. Looks like it's. Yeah, that's right, it's. Okay. Mr. Lynn Scott?
Yeah, where where do I find that, I meant final draft.
Well, that does not look correct. Those are some split designated areas, okay, we might have to revise this a little bit.
Yeah.
We added, it's a PDF under final draft, so I know we cleaned these up, so I just got this right before the meeting, so. I'll have to verify it and make sure the edits are correct.
Is that it?
Yeah, if you zoom in, the colors are possible, they're all.
How do you zoom that?
Uh, like they just roll and roll, it doesn't want to do more than that. It's spreading a lot, they might got closer.
Yeah, I see like this, it doesn't look just, it doesn't look like the static map incorporates the changes that were approved, so I'll I'll double check with G I S and see if I can have them re-balance this.
Um. Yeah, I think, yeah, there was, there were some definite areas.
Yeah.
Um. I think I covered this last time. That 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 piece my brother has in the family parcel gets back to yellow now.
On that triangle, yeah, you change it, it didn't stick, it didn't stick.
Okay. Let me go look at that presentation.
One more time.
Round three of people. Down. The this piece right here. You have?
E R D here.
Yeah, so I that PDF I was just showing, it doesn't look look like they incorporated all the changes. That's what I was just saying. All PDF looks looks like a draw. So I'm gonna go back. Where this map is correct. So I'll I'll double check to make sure they they pulled the right data. It looks like they pulled an older version of our of our draft land map, so.
They just got a bunch of. Okay, don't even need.
Make sure that, make sure that these. The designations on the waterfront lots for change.
Well, where they originally put all of it.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Otherwise.
Hmm, so. This is what we agreed on on these lots right here. I think so. I think these are. Those are rural residential. This one is, I think this was a zone change.
Yeah, so we talked about change that one to rural. Make it all blue.
I don't know if you if that was agreed upon or not.
I think it was. I don't remember that. One or the other. Big check. Oh, this is up off the car tree. I generally would have slept pretty much left in his headquarters.
Um.
Those are those are split, so we. Put those one into rural residential. That one.
The these two and these two, I think, were splitting somewhat similar to these, and the majority was rural residential.
Kick rose the residential up on that. Kind of one next to the blank one. Right. That's what we agreed to do. That one picked that up to maybe consistent. I don't think so. That's a split Carson. No, it isn't. The one with the two black wishbones coming in like.
Mm hmm.
That one person.
Yeah.
Black. Like this, the worst, car tree goes up around, just have the two roads coming in like. Reactor. Look up here.
The one just above your muscles.
Yeah. And that one. What is that? That's not split. So that is forced.
That's that course.
So I think we we thought we talked about it, but we didn't. We decided not to change. That's part of the collection.
Yeah. So I believe, and maybe we can incorporate something in the. Maybe we can incorporate something in the next, uh, at at the hearing, but I believe there's a a number of properties. That have tried to be annexed from the city of Dover. I don't know if it's, it might be this area, it might be this area. I don't follow. I heard that they're going, I I heard that they're gonna be settling out of court. So, um, they went to court because the city denied them. I believe they're getting. Um, I'm still waiting to hear back confirmation from the city officials there, so we might. It might be a prudence to say that changes once I figure out what those properties are.
All right.
So we're hoping for new yearly.
In the next half hour.
Yeah.
Call. Call. Yeah, well, it's all where we are. Okay, okay. Well, I, yeah, they're waiting downtown. On the town day, but town closes in about ten minutes.
Okay. Okay, so I will get a new static map. I heard, um. Mr. Chambers told me he was almost done with the public viewer of this. I told him to label it, uh, proposed comprehensive plan map. Um, public viewer, so it'll be a static zoom in, zoom out. You can't make any changes or click on, there'll be no other data layers other than. Um, what you're gonna see here. Um, it won't be able to click on that. There'll be probably a legend on it somewhere showing what these different land use designations are. And I'll have a, like I said, the static map. But other than that, I think we have a. Pretty good final draft.
All right. So. Um. Anything else on the map? Anything else on the? Next. Uh, okay, so next meeting. Where this stuffs. Goals. We're gonna discuss the improvement. I think with nine years.
So we, like I like I started beginning of meeting, um. I'll have two workshop items. One is more of an informative to show you what the board has directed staff to do as I process that change to the already part code. Um, part of the part in campground code and just those two uses and we use table. Um, and then the other one's gonna be a workshop to start start our discussion on family exemptions and my land divisions. Um, all kind of it's, uh. I'll try to email. I will. I'll email all of you the. The moratorium information, um, that also puts it on our that place. Uh. Show you the justification behind that, um, but I think we need to start having those conversations if you guys want to take it up starting next week. That that's what I told the board is that present it starting next week, so. I know it it's a lot to chew on. Um, I don't, we don't need to solve it in one meeting. I think it's if you wanna just read over it, review it and not start making any changes, just like having an informational discussion on it. And then we think about it and then figure out again on the eleven. I think that's totally appropriate. Eleven to twelve hundred the next week.
Much fifteen.
Fifteen, first and fifteenth, whether it is.
Day. Well, I would suggest that, um. That everyone read the some of the. Code exceptions to deal with. Some divisions with short flats, MLDs and family divisions. So that, you know, we have some idea of going into it. What the different requirements are for the different categories. But that's what we're gonna be addressing. That's it. Um. So let's also put on just for whether we into it or not, the. Um. Goals, goals objectives and policies.
Implementation.
Implementation. Component. And then we'll discuss how we're gonna address the balance of the implementation plan.
Okay.
We keep, I keep referring to there's that's fifteen components, actually sixteen, if you talk about the.
I think we added one for airports, is that right?
Well, there's.
Of course, including one, we did, we there's there's seventeen if you include that electrical, you know, national electrical port, but.
We don't have.
That's six, but we got sixteen. Yeah, I think we didn't. We add one. I thought it was airports we added. It used to be incorporated in transportation.
Right.
We pulled it out and added it.
Yeah. But so.
Used to be fifteen.
Right, he did that one.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Did that one.
Yep, airports is a separate component.
Now. If you know. I'm sorry, Jake, did you say you're gonna send us an email that has the miners conditions or the. What the MLDs and those other topics to review? So.
Or you can look up the code.
I'll give you the memo that I presented to the board along with the ordinance that has the justification for the moratorium. More or less explains what the problems are currently with the code, um, and gives you the justification by having why we would stay on it for now. Um, but then I can also send a link to chapter six if you wanna, if you want me to, that's fine. And I'll point out the specific chapters to kind of start a reviewing. Um, it is a very complex, um. Section. Um.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have the pointers.
Yeah.
You know, the things that the reasons why.
Yeah.
But in general, put in context, be the code. Because it's how it works.
Yeah.
It is complex.
I think it's also probably prudent to talk about why was the minor land division first developed? And there was some good justification behind it back in twenty eighteen.
Station.
Sixteen, my apologies.
Yeah.
So I'll I'll present some of that cuz I had the previous director reached out to me and just gave me some update as to why did we first develop this? What were the problems they were trying to solve? So.
When was that? What was that adopted? Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Yeah.
I'm looking at Matt cuz I'm sure he.
It was, yeah, we we dealt with it. Hundred and eighteen.
And you'll send that out to Jake? The what? The sixteen, why, the history of why they're. Uh, yes, I'll I'll go back and look at the 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 previous ordinances and I'll see if I can grab like the staff report is to that explains it.
Mainly just to recap it real quick. Matt, you chime in. The process, according to people who wanted to get stuff done in those days, was too slow. They just took too much time, too much thing. They. Somewhat they were concerned about the public notice and all that, but that was part of the timeout. So we got changed.
Um, some of the rationale was the number of illegal land divisions happening that weren't being caught. So if you make the process too difficult, then people just circumvent the process. I think there's some of that. But again, like I I said, we should probably. Have that discussion starting next week, and then we'll have implementation component as kind of the. Uh, another workshop item. We'll see if we can get to that, so. Any other items the board wants to.
I think that'll do it.
Everybody will be good.
Okay. Uh, with that. Unless there's any other. I have to bring out where you're till, uh, April first, or at four thirty, and I don't know. Looking at our highway two.